Okay. The Town of Groton Planning and zoning Commission has called the order, special meeting tonight. Now a roll call. That's so.
Who?
Steve.
I care.
And you. And myself. So we have a forum.
Yep.
All right, were there any public communications?
Do you want to appoint Jim?
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, thank you.
As a voting member.
Yeah, I already forgotten and taking in view as a full member. Yes, if you would kindly serve as a full member.
Thank you.
Be seated, so.
Right, so we did receive. We did receive communications from Magic.
Okay.
But it was ten minutes ago, so I will get that to you.
Oh, okay.
I was saying, yeah.
No, no problem.
From Jeff, yeah.
No, no problem at all. And Lauren, would you please be seated also? I guess for Kevin. Thanks.
Okay, so.
And Jim, you'll be seated for Michael then?
Thank you.
Great. All right, so new business, now we have the work session. So would town staff like to start, or how would you like to do this? Or our honored guests? Yeah, thanks again, Jeff, for visiting us.
Check that one. Open the question.
It might be. Should still be out, I can just minimize this on.
Okay.
Yeah, I think John Bay. Oh, I'm gonna close this all the way up. Nope. Oh wait, here we go, yay! Or is that, yep, awesome.
I think it's Lauren, it's up to you if you want to sit here or words, better view.
Are we certain Michael's not coming?
Well, there's two chairs, there's two chairs there. Even then.
And Lauren, Lauren, I left you a map right there, it's rolled up there, that one's view.
Hi, it's welcome everyone. The session continues. So today we focus on chapter six, which is communication and community engagements, plus your approach to implementation and physical land use. Still, like you've done the past several months, we'll have a quick conversation this month about whether you support, support changes, do not support, the one policy and two strategies related to communication and community engagement. So that will be pretty familiar from everyone. And then you'll spend the bulk of this evening talking about, I'll read a little bit about the implementation section of chapter six. We'll spend the bulk of the evenings on the future land use map and talking through some questions about how you would like that to be structured, they want a daily plan. But start, again, we've got one policy related to communication and community engagements, which is provide open and transparent communications and opportunities for community engagement across all levels of government. And the two related strategies. Develop a townwide comprehensive communication strategy, ensure that the public is informed about what is going on, how to find information, and how to get involved in local government. Ensure that there are clear channels of communication for the public to contact and provide feedback, town staff and officials, and a centralized digital platform for ongoing projects. And then the second one, six one B, develop a civics engagement training program for all residents, including those from underrepresented populations. So. And we'll start the evening by talking through.
We're sharing so that people can see, we're just sharing the screen.
Okay.
Can see what you're.
No, I'm sorry, I thought we were already.
No, we were not.
Okay.
Okay.
Any thoughts on this policy and the two related strategies?
Is there anything there we're not doing now?
It's a question for town staff, I think the civics engagement training is something that has been pondered, we have done, a one community conversation around that topic and developed some slides around that. So I think there are certainly ways to make that more robust.
And in your text, actually, the, under the things we are doing now, you'll see that there are multiple departments who have multiple social media presences and most multiple Facebook page, that's not a coordinated approach for the town.
Right.
So that. We're just talking about planning and zoning.
No, this is develop a townwide comprehensive communication strategy.
This is, this is not just us, this is the big picture.
Right.
Right, so a lot of different groups doing a lot of different things around communications. As we were working on advertising for this project, for the housing project, and for other projects, and realized that, oh, well, this office has got a Facebook page, and we'll use that, and this one has Instagram, we'll use that, and there are various contact lists, but there isn't like a comprehensive list or a way for, you know, some communities will have, you can opt in for different topics, and you can say, okay, I want to know everything about land use and zoning, and I want to know everything that happens related to the fire districts, or what might happen. And there right now isn't a coordinated policy.
So maybe the word unified needs to be in there somewhere, because that's what's really missing, it's comprehensive, great. But we need to just get it all together.
Yes.
Strip down together.
Yeah, sorry to ask something pedantic here, but I don't have those numbering ones on my package, I was looking, Steve doesn't seem to either. Was there something like the six dot one dot A, I don't have that in what I got today, so.
It's on page ten? Or page, yeah, or page five of that section, but yeah, thanks. Yeah.
Age of the best, or the, the fifth page of the packet?
The tenth page of the packet.
The tenth page, okay. That's.
And as our current work.
Oh, but, no, but where's the, oh, policy one, okay. Great, thank you. So we're not talking about the whole first part, or we're gonna go back to that later?
I think right now we're just doing the policy strategies.
I mean, that's fine. I had no broad comments in the first part, all right.
I, if I could add a comment, it would be, to add the word active as opposed to passive. I, in my opinion, I feel like putting stuff up on a Facebook or an Instagram page is actually pretty passive, it's like a digital billboard, whereas something like a direct communication, be it like a direct mailing that you do once a year, I think we talked about at one point having like a little packet of information for new home buyers, something that's a little bit more active and direct, I liked in the in kind of the exposition you had ahead of this, talking about like direct text message campaign and that sort of stuff. I think that's important, and I, I feel like a lot of the times we fall down as a government when we expect people to come to us
Sure.
as opposed to being proactive, and proactive with either word, I guess, or reactive, but a proactive communication strategy.
Now, where are you finding the word active?
It's not there.
It's not there.
Yeah, it's not there, I think it shouldn't be.
Yeah, some things are updating a lot, some things aren't.
Sure.
Right, you're expecting people to find you as opposed to.
Right.
They'll find you.
I think that six one B is good. But. Because that will help encourage more volunteers probably over the long. But I was wondering how you're gonna communicate this?
Well.
Proactive.
Exactly, proactively, right? I think that's part of the comprehensive communications, need for comprehensive communication strategy in the first place, is that then you can better reach out to folks when you have asks like this. I mean, it's the whole, everything that we've been doing with reaching out to the different community organizations and developing the relationships and building those lists, and that's all part of. I think that's, that's sort of the base level of this work versus.
Yeah, I think that's all well and good, but I guess when I first look at the town website, because I always work for that first, then by the time you get to what you're looking for, it's quite a journey sometimes, or sometimes you know it, finish up your journey. And I find a lot of feedback, I think, from the community, that they find it very difficult to use, and I don't think that's a big problem. That's just a matter of, if we're gonna have something really for the community, maybe we need a special, you know, whatever, symbol or something on practically page one, because people don't have the patience to be searching for things all the time.
Well, that's, that's a that's a webpage design issue. Which, I completely agree, even though there's those big bold things and whatnot, and just got some real issues with too much information not sorted directly, I don't know. Like, somebody here put together the webpage, I don't want to insult anybody, so. And maybe that's the problem. Is that it kind of gets developed, and very often, I'm accustomed to Department of Defense webpages, which are mind bending how awful they are. And the idea is that it's all there, it's, it's on, in fact, for our meeting minutes, we say, can be found on the town website. Well, good luck, if you, if you're just getting into it for the first time, and it should be a point and click, and be and none of us are designers for that, but there are people who do it, and that's one, I don't know if you need the word clear in it, because that's one of the things that isn't, you've got, I don't want to overuse the word, ensure there are clear channels of communication, it's not a cut channel, it's a display or a maybe it just has to talk about the website, because overwhelming, it always comes back down to the website at this point.
Yeah.
Just everything folds back into it.
Initially had a strategy specific to the website, and in the process of boiling this down, six one A was meant to incorporate that and a lot of the other things, but maybe we can also be explicit.
Just, just, yeah, recognize in this that to continually update and clarify or streamline, you can't fill the words I'm looking for. I think there's a, there's a, there's a, the policy with, with web design, which is called, don't make me think.
Yes.
And here we have to think a bunch. Do I scroll, do I click, what do I do?
Well, I think we're trying to reach audiences, I mean, I have, you know, iPads or whatever else too, we need to think, if they go into the town website, what's the best way, am I, no, we're not designing it, thank goodness, or else it'd probably be a disaster. I have some fault in that, but I was like, what's, what's gonna work to communicate to our audiences? And we have a lot of audiences, I think it's great the way you've called out lots of different groups, or so they're not hopefully forgotten, you know, the lessons, and I know, do you want your comment?
My question's about this, but there's a, I have a general question about the entire plan, and that is, how are we going to measure success related specifically to these communication strategies? But that's a question I have throughout the plan, is what are the measures of success, how do we know that we're doing better on these strategies?
Yeah, that's a great question, and historically, we've noticed that all the goals, and sometimes, how many goals have there been in the past plans?
Awesome.
Eighty or so, that, well, you had about half of them, I guess, were met, not that anyone was keeping track or knew that they were being met, a little bit older being met, but we're hoping to have a matrix of how to follow up on the key points. I think that's a great question, that's our fundamental, whatever fundamental questions going into this, it's all well and good to sit down and spend hours, but we'd like to achieve something too.
Maybe it's not that difficult. Because in this case, pardon me, for a website, it's measurable, how many people log onto the website, how many people look at the website? Maybe that's all it takes, how many people are actually in there for a period of time? These trackers are available. Just, so we do something that tells us, here's where we are now, is it any better?
No.
Is that, is that metric actually achieving the outcome that we want, which is increased civic engagement? So I think the outcome we'd measure then is, how many town volunteers do we have, how many seats are vacant now versus in ten years from now?
Well, it's two parts of engagement, one is informed. That people aren't posting things on Nextdoor saying, what's the matter with these guys, because they already read about it and know about it. Well, that's one thing, and the other one is, yes, get more volunteers, so I think it's two different things.
Well, I, I think.
And they're both measurable, as you.
They're both measurable, but what, what are we actually trying to get with civic engagement? What do we want that to look like? Manifestly, right?
And I, I think for each department, for each, you know, board and commission, it's gonna be something that's a little different, because some people, the most important thing is, all right, how do I access finding where I get my dog license? And other people, it might be, I'm concerned about a development application next to me, or, you know, and a whole host of things in between. So again, I think some of it gets to that, you know, what are the measures of success, but also what's that kind of goal of what we're reaching for, because I think all of us could probably come up with a different idea of what successful civic engagement to some of us, it might be, all right, the public feels informed and educated about what's actually happening within their community, and I think, you know, all right, that's a good one, but how do we do that, and we're, you know, constantly trying new things?
Then I see elsewhere in something printed that you've given us, it talked about, how do we measure, what are the metric? Which I think is a fantastic idea, I think Kevin's always a big one, show me the numbers. And this is one where I think it's incredibly valuable to have something rather than just say, looks like we did a great job. A whole lot of people showed up. Were people show up, like, were they angrier, were there, what's going on, so? I think come up with something, even if it's slightly vague, even if it's not, doesn't hit the nail, just come up with something that we're going to say, we're gonna have a metric, so we can measure it and see how we did.
Well, that was the idea, really, have a metric for all of our main goals, and to have, you know, have it so that it can be measured. And so it isn't onerous, we're not asking for a weekly follow-up by
Oh, right.
town staff on all these things. And some things ought to be followed, of course, more often than others, but, but I think that, that is towards the end, and it'll be, it'll be a really good exercise to put it together and try see how, we can make sure it has a better chance of working and of success.
I'm just trying to remember what, which ones you had, something that just glared at me that was exactly right, so say, okay. And what's, how do we define success?
Well, part of that was the, you may have been thinking about what I presented at the public meeting last week, which is, I think, the introduction, so the principles of implementation, where we do talk about figuring out what your goal is, collecting the data you need, and tracking and monitoring to make sure that you're, you're achieving what you set out to achieve, allowing yourself to try new things, if what you thought would work didn't actually work.
That's right. Adjust, you know. I mean, to what extent can we adjust things on a P O C D, I mean, to some extent. Especially on the matrix part, you know, how to get their last piece.
Yep.
Some of these strategies, you know, six A is more, I think, more difficult, more challenging to come up with a measure, six B, you have a training program, so how many people attended, were they, what was their profile, whether they include under representative groups? And then to Lauren's point, what else are they doing? How are they getting engaged once they get through a training program?
Yeah. Yeah, the ultimate goal, and yours from now, is that you've got this bench of more engaged citizens who are interested in serving on parks and commissions, don't have vacancies, you're not struggling to get comfortable to tend to get you know, this is one of the reasons we're asking, when you get into knowing questions, while going out to the public, so you know that over time, you're, you have more of the full diversity of the town who's participating in, in the government, and that's another way to, to practice through surveys, speaking of surveys, another strategy, a lot of communities use is have an annual resident satisfaction survey, and use the same questions year after year, and you track progress over time, it's more qualitative, quantitative. But, you know, the quantitative part is, yeah, more people are, are satisfied specific aspects of town government.
But then, you know, with a lot of these things that we're working on and thinking about the metrics, we also have to keep in mind, how many people are actually getting engaged? We do a lot of outreach, and we often see a lot of the same people, it's hard to get into that, all right, who, who are we missing and why? We know some of them from things we hear are participating on, you know, other social media type of platforms like Nextdoor or Facebook and commenting on there, but they don't show up at some of the meetings that we might have. So those are things that we try to do the best that we can, and then also, as we're measuring these, some of these items, we may or may not have the resources to actually do them. So whether it's, you know, develop a plan for X, or even developing the civics engagement training program, that's something that we've been working on for a little while, but the town department that we want to work on to do that has had some staff turnover, they're short on staff, so we can't create those training videos yet. And that's, you know, the reality that just brings everything to a grinding halt as well.
Right, but we'll prioritize them, sure.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see, I hope we're gonna see some people joining commissions maybe from diverse areas within five years, actually, I mean, we're not seeing some by then, but probably ten might not make it.
Absolutely.
Good, well, let's see, twenty minutes on.
Yeah, if there was anything else people wanted to say about that, you know, the, the text of chapter six, I know you said you had some of it, Steve.
Yes, but. I think I already sent in my my comments on that, so I do have to go over them again there.
Yeah, so if there's anything that's just a hate this, fix it, more fix it, if there's anything we've been discussing.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of opportunity here, for sure, improve the way we're communicating. All right.
And speaking of, well, let us talk a little bit about that approach to implementation. So as you mentioned, another product, so the last product, this is the implementation matrix, which is the spreadsheet that will show each of the policies, strategies, timeframe, who's responsible, and performance metrics. Must, they'll all be part of that last piece. And we hope that the town staff and yourselves and others can use that matrix to assess how implementation is proceeding. And yeah, we do expect you to add and delete strategies over the course of the ten years, that was built in with that assumption, you can make amendments. Or, you know, not adding or deleting, but refining strategies that are already in here, there may be things that, you know, there isn't the level of detail today, because we don't know exactly which direction you're gonna go, but once you actually move forward, you can make those refinements to the strategies, to make them, improve their effectiveness. And then archiving strategies when they are, you don't want to lose them, but you want to celebrate that, yes, we achieved what the town can achieve.
Yeah, I think there'd be a good idea to put almost like an appendix in the back.
Sure.
Because I think it'd be useful, we have so many things we expect people to get done. Hard to keep track of. But.
That's.
No, that's, that's good though.
Two thousand sixteen, what's that, right? We had that in the back.
Yep.
It'll direct the public to, if they want to know where we're at and that.
Yep, yeah, exactly, here's where we are, here's what we've achieved. And so other ways you can communicate that. One of the things we want to be explicit about in this chapter is that, what you can see is the group that's empowered to oversee implementation. And what we said is that six months after the plan adoption, P C C in partnership with O P D S staff will develop a schedule and process to coordinate and monitor planning implementation. And so the plan itself, the chapter lays out how this could look, it will be up to you, how this looks the reality, but this could be an opportunity to review progress on my chapters, topics, or strategies with partners. So back to the, the conservation commission, that the V C, that the, the historic district, wherever else you need to partner with to achieve a number of these, both the strategies. You can also use this as an opportunity to amend the plan if things change. You know, we've seen a tremendous amount of change in the last ten years, and things are, are constantly changing. And we want you to have, to be nimble enough to, to make changes to the strategies as needed. This also is an opportunity to review bigger future issues of planning implementation. So for example, identifying barriers, discussing leads for amendments and so forth. Also will help you prepare periodic implementation reports, so that's one of those things that's really important for communication with the public. Not only, you know, they shouldn't have to problems with the website anytime they want to find out what's going on, and to proactively, we should be proactively on a regular schedule, up to you how often, how often that is, but preparing the report, getting that out to the public and saying, hey, here's what we've accomplished, here's what we're still progressing with, here's where we may expect to see changes in the coming year based on based on situations, either locally or nationally. And then coordinate efforts and land use priorities with town council, you know, that's something that, as you've discussed, as a body, is really important, something that's missing. So we want to write in here an explicit opportunity, and again, whether you request this annually, you know, up to you, what, what you request of the town councils, but you want to make sure it's in there that you will have regular times to coordinate land use with the town council.
Well, I was thinking about that, always dangerous, but one thing that makes it difficult, quite honestly, to coordinate maybe, or interact with the town council, or understand better some of the meetings is having our dates, you know, in the same day. I think that's a huge barrier myself. And if it's possible, because I know the calendar's coming out soon, if it's possible to get a day that works for everybody instead of Tuesday, because I think it's gonna be an easier sell for us to move our day than to ask the town council to move, you know.
And if it's not possible, maybe it's easy to have scheduled light days that we have on here, the meeting keeps going long after hours.
No, it's true, but it's kind of nice to be, if you want to say something, you have to be there at the beginning, I guess.
That's true.
And, and.
But I think we ought to try to see if we can.
That, that timing actually works out well.
Yeah.
It is the first Tuesday where you are able to address the council, you do not meet on the first Tuesday.
Okay, so it's only the first Tuesday.
Right, the committees.
For the public to address it, invite us as a committee at any time.
Exactly, you could be on an agenda, that's correct.
Okay, well, it may be something to think about when there's something that we want to communicate, the commission agrees, you know, let's go there, let's show up, you know, for a change, and then the other thing I was thinking about too, now I don't know if it's gonna work, but almost to have like a town council update on the agenda from time to time, like, we have a lot of things on the agenda that we don't even talk about, you know? I mean, there also be really long meetings, we have kind of a standard thing. And if we really, especially once we come up with maybe some topics, we're gonna be working more with the town council, I hope. Then I think it would be good, it's almost like a placeholder, in case somebody from the town council wants to walk in and say, here's an update, or you've got this wrong, or whatever, you know? It's just a couple ideas, which I welcome.
Yeah.
criticism, whatever, but it's, it's always been missing for a long time, I think.
I think, I think the other thing that might help is, oftentimes, we don't find out what's going to be on the agenda until two or three days, well, the weekend before, right, Thursday or Friday beforehand, if you need folks like in the planning department, know what's coming up on the town council agenda, they don't release those to the public, but if we can have a heads up so that we can.
It's a lot of moving parts, we can't really see them that Thursday.
I think we're both.
Right.
But I think that's a great point, because we don't ever know.
And, yeah, I, I think, you know, there's kind of two pieces, one, whether the members of the commission, or the whole commission, want to go to a regular town council meeting, speak at the open mic, it's a night you don't have a meeting, but if you wanted to have a sit-down once every year with the town council, if we ask the council, hey, can we be first on the agenda? Because commission has a meeting that night, we're gonna start our meeting at, you know, seven thirty, it's a light agenda, or whatever, so you're not here too long. If whoever wanted to be the spokespeople, or it's the whole commission, and try to get you first thing on the agenda right at six thirty, you could take that first hour or that chunk of time, and then roll into this meeting as well, or if we knew there was a topic or a group of topics we wanted to address, we could always move an agenda, an agenda date, or a meeting date, I should say. So I think we have options at our disposal.
Yeah.
We're happy to work. We're happy to work with you because I do think it would be beneficial for the council and the commission to talk once a year as groups, because I think there's a lot of initiatives that you're working on that are not often, you know, they, they should be running on parallel tracks.
Right. Yeah, good. And I think, uh, of course, first we have to come up with our, I guess, list of issues that we think are important enough, we should show up at town council meetings.
Yeah, well, once it would be an update, but as needed, issues are thrust upon us. Or, you know, how many times we have, but we need to talk.
Kinda wish they would have meetings with us sometimes.
Right.
Well, hopefully that'll change.
And I think.
New council too.
Also, as you set priorities, once we're done with the P O C D and we take a breath for a couple of months and then we go and say, all right, how do you wanna set your best, your biggest priorities? How do you get that to the town council and the R T M so that they understand it and they budget properly for it? If there's certain things we have to do that require additional funding or whatever it is.
It's a good point. I'm sure there will be some. Good, all right.
Last bit on implementation. Uh, so we have some statements on communications and transparency, uh, so some basic standards for um, sharing any implementation reports that, uh, you all produced, uh, with the public as well as with neighborhood municipalities. Um, and I encourage you to see this section of the chapter sort of the code and then six months after, within six months of adoption, you're working on the regulations, right? And you can then change those regulations, uh, how you, uh, communicate with the town council, how you communicate with the public. Um, on implementation issues, you can set that and let that evolve over time, but this is what's giving you the authority to do so. Uh, in terms of education, uh, at the, at a minimum, uh, we encourage to make hard copies available for plan for each town office, uh, for staff reference. And also make sure that, uh, each new member of any town board commission, official, local elected official or town staff, be then proactively, uh, given a copy of the plan, hard copy or electronic, um, which is given in some orientation that this is important, this is what guides us and you need to familiarize yourself with this. Um, if you want to go beyond that and, and have a little class, uh, or, or, you know, normal orientation for, for new hires or, uh, new board members, uh, you can certainly explore things like that as well.
Or YouTube.
Or YouTube, yes.
That's where he's short, two staff members right now, so soon we will be doing some YouTube videos.
Great.
I think it was also important to at least make this statement because this has come up a lot in our conversations. Uh, very early on, there was this push and pull of, well, can we put things in here, they're going to have implications for the budget. And, uh, the answer is absolutely yes, but this is not a budget, the town is not, the plan is not a budget. Uh, the plan does not, uh, make the, the town council beholden to adopt anything or, or spend money in any way. Um, but, uh, this plan, we hope, uh, will serve as, um, uh, again, those, those, uh, implementation principles, uh, help, that help the town set clear goals. Collect data, be accountable, innovate. Um, so no, it doesn't hold anyone's feet to the fire for a specific funding, uh, but we hope it will be the lens through which the town council makes decisions about budget.
Yeah, maybe R T M too.
And I guess another point I haven't really thought enough about the R T M.
He's gonna hold this.
Well, that's, that's a good question. Let us spend a few minutes if you would, uh. Should there be any formal, uh, recognition of the R T M? In this chapter, what sort of, uh, relationship or dialogue would you like to have with them as opposed to the town council?
Well, we do go over the capital budget every year.
Sure.
They're in control of funding.
Right.
Through the intro, which tells me that they should know what our goals are. They're not, I don't think they're reading.
Sure.
This, so maybe they're, that should be in there somewhere.
Maybe it'd be good to have some sort of summary for them or something, but talk about, like you say, everything that needs funding.
Yeah.
The proposed funding.
Well, I'll add them, to the very least, we'll add them to the list of, uh, groups that need education.
Yeah. Something that I've heard for my entire career doing planning work is often members of the community think, well, you adopted the plan of conservation and development, you're done, right? Everything's done. You came up with all the ideas and you're gonna do things. And often, other decision makers, people that approve the funding, don't realize that just sets the plan. Now we gotta get into the hard work of actually implementing and studying and doing a deeper dive and making sure there's actually community support for when we really get down to brass tacks. And that is something that we can always use more help, uh, with. So, you know, we go to the town council and the R T M to talk about specific initiatives. Sometimes we'll talk about broader topics, but it's still difficult. One of the reasons we started the community conversations was, one, not only to get out to the community more, but it was also just another platform to talk about some of the broader based initiatives that we're working on with the planning and zoning commission or as a department.
Yeah. So they also have public comment once a month at their Wednesday meetings. Um, they have several subcommittees that meet frequently and would probably be just as happy to, to speak with us about.
Sure.
You know, the community development services, public safety committees, that kind of stuff. Um, and you, we probably should meet with them ahead of budget season so that when they see some of these appropriations come through, they tend to be a little bit more cut happier than the town council. Um, so, you know, we can, we can at least then, um, have that conversation before they actually get the budget, but also it, it serves as a, a way to get additional advocates for some of the initiatives.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to start talking to them, this would, with them, for sure.
Kinda on the same cadence as a town.
Yeah, I mean, they're in my neighborhood, I know them personally, and we do talk, this, this is. Do I do something more formal as a outflow from this? Um, because some of the things we're doing will affect the whole budget season too, I'm sure.
Everybody, how many members?
Like forty-five.
Yeah, I was like, it's a lot.
It's a large.
Two per district or something.
Um, there's. It's proportionally represented based on population. Um, I think the smallest district has four and the largest district has ten representatives.
And you have thoughts on implementation, Paul, you move on to your future land use map?
That's good. Yes.
Uh, uh, we, we all understand it perfectly. I just, I'm, I'm trying to always go back to who's reading this.
Yeah.
And one of the things is exactly as you said, this does not, it's not the budget for the town. We, this does not make anything happen. This is the goals and the intent of the town. And maybe that needs to be, this is the place to make it clear, is that this is merely the goals and the intent and not a direction to fund implicit invitation. As much as we would like.
Sure.
Well, we do ask questions about those items.
We do.
A little budget review.
But that's when they've already decided we wanna do it and then we get back into it. But if it, if it doesn't show up in the capital plan, we have nothing to say.
Yeah, pretty much. I think we've changed a few things, but yeah.
I did.
It's the exception, I'm sure. Good, all right.
All right, so let's talk future land use map and, uh, it's really the trucks, uh, you were talking about, uh, in many ways, the future land use map is your executive summary. This is a visualization of how you expect, uh, land to change in the next ten years and how you expect it, uh, to stay largely the same. Um, so to set sort of a framework for our discussion this evening, um, when we think about what's going to be represented on future land use map, sort of dividing them into three categories, one being concrete land use changes. So these are things that you can put a flag on the earth, you know, that you have committed over the next ten years, uh, things that are going to change or conversely, things that will stay the same. These are things you're pretty confident about and you wanna, you want them reflected on the map. Uh, category two, potential land use changes. So things where you expect there's likely to be some change or, uh, or at least pressure for change, uh, over the next ten years, but you're not ready now to say this is what it's gonna be. So these are things that you expect to have more analysis for the next two years. Uh, then we also like to put other layers, uh, on this map that impacts what can happen with future land use. Um, so for example, go over, uh, in more detail in a moment, but, uh, future roadways and trails, climate considerations, uh, other things that may, uh, impact your decisions about land use moving forward.
Oh, can we go back to that slide before you move on? Oh, sorry, I'll wait till you.
Where is the button?
Can't wait till you.
So anyone have a?
There's, there's a back arrow on the right there.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it is.
Oh, maybe. Yeah. There you go.
Oh, very good. Thanks. Yeah, just, just thinking about this, um, looking at, I always love maps, especially this one. But, um, we have a lot of land where we do have a development slated for it. I mean, we even have an agreement, some things are farther along, some of them have my Lars signed and all that. I think, I think it'd be really good to mark somehow, um, on, on a piece of land that this has a, either a, a committed project. And we'd almost have like a probable or, um, you know, some things that that we should consider are ripe for the development that's allowed in that zone. Particularly multifamily type things, because we have a number of those, the pipe, pipeline. And it makes it difficult to look at what's such a busy town map and not be able to pick out, okay, this is not available essentially or shouldn't be because, you know, so and so was in the door, you know, talking to the town council or whatever, so.
A couple of thoughts, and I know, you know, Deb's, uh, probably has some ideas as well. One of the things that I often tell members of the public, the council is, until hammers are swinging, uh, excavators are out there digging, that site is still, you know, whether it's vacant, whether it's an old, a brown field or a gray field, until that construction project is happening, we never really know. I mean, we have some approvals that have been hanging out there for years. I mean, there was an approval that, on a piece of property that we ended up buying for open space. Um, so it's hard to really put a pin on something and say, oh, this is approved unless it's been constructed. I do think adding the, um, open space conservation layer to the map has helped identify these are the parcels that are, you know, these are off the table for development.
And, and just because there is a building that does not be, there might not be another one.
Right.
In, in five years. I mean, this future land use map, it's generally categories, right? Is this the area where you want higher density? Is this the area where you want commercial? Doesn't really matter if there's already commercial there or it's vacant, is that what you want there?
I hear you, but we're down the road with a lot of developers. And that's why I'm kinda like those that, um, for some of the school properties where we really have something going on, or maybe the exact development on Gold Star or developments on Gold Star and other places, I think it would be just really helpful, almost a different color or something, or stripes or.
I'm not convinced it belongs on the future land.
Yeah, I would agree. That might be a separate map.
Yeah, and it'd be a working.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, that's fine.
Projects map.
It's really to look and get, it really helps with zoning, like, what is really probably not, or isn't available, but also probably, um.
Oh, maybe, but excuse me, maybe that's all it needs is, is an appendix item. That is just what's in the works.
And even that is gonna be out of date next year.
Yeah.
And that's fine.
But that's okay, we have like a layer, G I S layer that would just say.
That might be a map of, you know, development activity or development as opposed to future land use. Because I, I think one of the, one of the things Deb said with future land use, we really need to think about, there could be something that's under construction today on a property that ten years from now, that whole site might get wiped clean and something new might come along. We hope things don't only last for ten years, that we haven't gotten into that, that level of short term, but.
But the conversions, I mean, there are things on the future land use map that are shown as institutional, there are churches, there are schools, there are whatever. And in ten years, that church might be something else.
Sure. At least it's institutional, it's got a certain dark color.
But isn't, should it be? I mean, that's.
Well, it might that until we have better information, should leave it like it is.
Yeah.
Maybe that's another discussion, because that's what I look at is that, we, we kinda ran into that with the oral school. We have some other, other places with the schools, where you say, we're getting zoned X. The only reason it's zoned X is because it was zoned X.
Yeah.
If we were to do it today, we wouldn't zone it that way because we wouldn't have an oral school. We would just, we'd just be zoning something else. So there's, there is a little trap to that, that we should be aware of. Here's what's there. Uh, that's, that's just a moment in time.
No, I'm not sure how that would be zoned today. I think that's a question you don't wanna get into without talking, talking to our neighbors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think you're both saying something very similar, that you're, all right, how do we get a handle on some of these properties that? What do we know? What, what's the, and really, the way you wanna approach this map, and I'm sure Jeff could have some other good words, is yes, what's there now, but what do we envision could happen here in the future? What's the, the existing use may or may not play into that, because there might be longer range plans. When we think of a lot of our Route One corridor, back in the two thousand sixteen P O C D, we had the node of this is where we want a development activity. Well, we've changed the zoning there to the M T C, the M V C.
Yeah.
All right, how applicable is that still? Do we wanna get into things like, all right, um, if there's ever gonna be a train station there? Is there something we need to tweak with that, making sure we address transit? I think we're in a good spot with that, but that might be more. And other areas around town. So I, I think, you know, we've kind of identified, I don't wanna get too far down the, the road here, some of these areas we wanna hone in on with you, but think about, not necessarily now, but even a year, three years, five and ten or beyond, when we're thinking. You know, when we're thinking about this future land use map. I mean, the, the example I talk about all the time, in nineteen seventy-nine, the town council was talking about, what do we do with the Mystic Oral School? You know, I was two years old at that point in time, that was a long time ago. And we still haven't figured out, as a town, what the future of that should be. And I'm sure if we asked neighbors around there, we'd get a lot of different answers from them. If we ask people on other parts of town, so that's something, I don't know if we're gonna come up with an answer, but at least identifying, all right, we need to do further study. We, that's an area that's targeted for further study. And, and that might be, you know, something a- along those lines.
So with respect to the, the, the extra little map of ongoing or projects in the works or things like that, that would enable someone else looking at, well, actually us to look at it and say, you know, I don't know where this thing is going right now, that this little project and whatever it is, but that's not getting its way. This is a place where we would like that to happen, so let's not plan a different thing that makes that not happen.
Yeah.
On the other hand, here's a thing that we really didn't care about and they're not going anywhere. Those are two different things.
Yep.
I, I kinda, I, here I'll give you a microcosm was that, uh, on, on base, we planned, I understand mill kind of is five year planning, but on base, there is now is that the training center for the submariners, where they figure out the training, built that building on a spot that when we were planning it, there were still people living in apartments that were on that site. That was still there. Now, the layman all looked around and says, well, we can't do anything there because there are departments there. The rest of us knew, well, we don't need to be, and apartments went away, the building went up. And then we need to be, have that flexibility, but in fact, if we just had decided, and we like apartments there, then we wouldn't have put that building there. So that's the idea of.
Yeah.
Having that information.
That is this process, that's exactly this process in a nutshell, where we want you to, I mean, honestly, we start with the existing zoning map and, uh, so is this about zoning not at first? But ultimately, you use your future land use map to make sure your zoning is compliant, right, and consistent. So I think it's appropriate to start by looking at your existing zoning map and saying, all right, when we think about the future of our town, what we want is where does our zoning already accommodate that? If not, where do we need to target changes? And so that's where those, that first category of concrete land use changes are again, where you say, no, we, we did your job with the zoning, this is where we want these things, and, uh, we're not gonna change that in the next ten years. Uh, and places like Mystic Education Center where, you know, the odds of, you know, this coming up with a, uh, put your flag in the sand, uh, answer by the time this is published is, is unlike, it's a good example of where, yep, we've been studying this for forty years, we're gonna keep studying it.
But recognizing right now that is zoned. But recognizing right now that is zoned R U lady. Something other than resident on the land you stack, if that's what you're seeing.
Certainly not that.
Whereas if you, you know, for for the map you were talking about with potential development or things that have been proposed, if most of those uh, multifamily um, development proposals are in zones that allows the multifamily, that's not going to result in a change in the land use map, right? That's that's
That's true.
Continuing, continuing course.
No, but it's showing us, it's giving us a better look at where they are. I know, this map I find very difficult.
Yes, and I'm hoping that we can come up with a much more streamlined and less busy.
Yeah, I'm sure.
A lot of information.
Well, I think developers coming in, when they like to look at something that said, you know, this is what's in the works, you know? This is potential, this one might be available, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it's an easier way to learn. To make it, make it easy for developers.
They they call us and we help.
Okay, and then I guess the other thing, uh, this is um, I I mentioned this to Deb already, and she very kindly told me that in fact staff is working on putting together a synopsis of the new housing bills, because I guess it's what, seven or eight hundred pages?
Once it's, once it's signed, it hasn't been signed yet.
Yep, yep. And um, I think that might be of interest, because it was, I was reading, this is always dangerous, but one summary of it before it's signed, but um, it was basically saying that towns that have a town land, that would have to be used for, for example, low income housing, that sort of thing, which I think is, that would be great to know before we go final with our map here, quite honestly. That would make a huge difference, I think, a lot of areas.
You know, some of that, I think also we, one, the council of governments is looking to put together something for the planners in early December. Uh, Connecticut A P A is actually looking to partner with all the councils of governments across the state to do a little bit more of a summary to inform everybody. And the timing and the rollout of that, we have no idea what it's going to be, so I don't think it's imperative for our future land use map right now that we don't have to know all the ins and outs. If there are some things that pop up, a month from now, if it's signed and moved forward that we learned, we can revisit that with the commission. Again, we have twenty-three percent of our year round housing stock is affordable. Impacts of that bill, I think, I think will be less to a community like us, but I think there'll still be impacts. We still have to do an affordable housing plan. I can't remember if it's every five or every ten years, we might be able to do that in cooperation every five with the council of governments, so there's some other ways to kind of do that deeper dive. And if it's five years from now, we, actually, I think it was almost five years.
Seven is when we're due to have it updated.
So at that time, if in twenty twenty seven, we redo our affordable housing plan, and there's changes from that that recommend changes to the future land use map, then we can update the P O C D as well.
No, I think that's something I want to, you know, be aware of and keep updated on for sure.
Hundred percent.
Because there's a lot of opportunities where the town would own something, it would have bought something else, and it might give access to certain properties that now can have large developments and things like that for lower income or other housing.
Yeah.
So, good, all right. Sorry, am I going too much in the weeds as usual?
Smarter on it as well.
I keep that in mind, if we get signed, that's right.
And last version I read, and I was like, oh wait, I didn't know this.
And you know, be, one other thing I want to say before Jeff gets into this, of all the things that we're working on in the P O C D, this is the most important page, this is the most important piece of what we're doing, because this is going to set the framework. Yeah, no pressure at all, but this is really what we go to and look at for, what is your vision? What is your intent for these areas and these districts in town? Can it be changed? Yes, is it meant to always stay that way? Not necessarily, but just as we're thinking about it, and you know, we hope to get some good answers from you tonight, but we might have to revisit this again.
So yeah, this is, this slide, John is absolutely right, is the single biggest decision point uh, for the evening, in my opinion as well. In my professional opinion, because the town, this group has done so much work since the twenty sixteen P O C D in updating your zone and changing the maps and creating new zoning districts and so forth. Uh, I, my impression is the boundaries of your uh, residential districts today are approximately correct. Uh, there may be some issues where you flag, oh, and actually we should be looking at this here or here. But I think generally speaking, you put a lot of time and effort into this, and your existing residential zoning districts are where they are for a reason, and largely wanting to keep them that way. So I would propose as a start, the boundaries of the future language map categories for residential, follow those boundaries, and then if we need to make adjustments, we need adjustments. Um, traditionally, those categories on the future language map uh, are defined by the residential density that's allowed there. And in twenty sixteen, um, you have examples of categories that allow a range of density, so it's not a hard and fast number, it's uh, and those are traditionally, again, divided up into rural, low density, medium density, high density. Those categories changed uh, from P O C D to uh, the next. It's the opposite, we need to do precisely the same from year to year, but I think generally the rest, rural, low, medium, high, makes sense. What we have to decide as a group is what those ranges of densities are under each category. And I think, you know, roughly speaking, your R U and your R eighty uh, can fall under that rural category. Below can be your uh, residential R S districts, the medium can be the R districts, and the high, your R M districts. Uh, and it's really just a matter of setting residential density standards that you think are going to be appropriate over the next ten years. Um, right now, the high category, I think caps like seven units an acre, which is a lot less uh, than what you allow under the R M district.
As well as C N, the commercial zones as well, those also allow multi-unit.
Right.
Yeah, anywhere, I'm talking just about the residential category now, but yes, so anywhere that allow any multifamily, uh, that, that high cap is much lower than what you actually allow now. So one of our main recommendations is, let's make sure that high category actually reflects the density that that you do allow. Um, and then that allows that medium category uh, to absorb in time. Uh, this concept of missing middle housing, uh, so you, you know, on the low end of the medium is probably still the, that that two family um, category. Uh, but let's make sure that, you know, whether it's seven units per acre, fifteen units per acre, um, that that medium category can accommodate with family, the poor family, and those other typologies that we're discussing. Uh, now that does not force you to uh, change the zoning, uh, but it does give you the flexibility over time, as we're not going to have resolved this um, missing middle housing project by the time uh, this needs to be adopted, that gives you the flexibility to come back in a couple of years and say, yeah, we'd like to allow some four unit within this district, and that is generally within this broader rate density that that you're allowing on the future language map, or you can keep it where it is today.
I think that'd be really helpful to know exactly what you're talking about for the missing middle, you know?
I don't think we're going to have that, I don't think we're going to have it done by the time this stuff's being.
Oh, that's okay, because it's, that's all right, but just to really know, you know, I mean, I understand public carings and all, that's what we definitely have, but this is a theoretical thing. What are you really thinking now? Because you riled off all these, you know, categories and just particularly for the missing middle, maybe start with that, and where would that be?
Right now, the median density is two to seven units per acre. However, what we're thinking about um, with missing middle is.
So, yeah, I mean, if you even, so Sue, you sat in on that steering group when Union was presenting on the housing typology report that will be online soon. You know, they're not, they make caveat that they're not um, of the mind that density is the perfect measure for the missing middle project, but they still show that absurd density for the kind of the inventory, the types that they found, so that might be a way that we can kind of benchmark what they're finding to get towards a realistic ceiling, if that's what you're you're getting at, like what, what is that missing middle range? Well, that missing middle range could be something that we're seeing as missing middle in town and what that density range currently sits at. Um, so I think those, I mean, those densities got up towards fifteen to twenty dwelling units an acre, so not that far off of what we're throwing out there.
And and let me weigh in on that, because one of the points Bryce made that I don't want to be missed, is he said, you know, e- even Union Studio said, density's not the best measure, you know, dwelling units per acre, but right now it's still the best way we have of measuring that, because when we bring two units an acre, what do we think about? We think about two single family homes that are eighteen hundred to twenty-two hundred square feet in size on a lot in a subdivision. That's not what we're looking at. It's not your traditional three, four bedroom house, it's things that are very different, it's smaller units. And um, that might be eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet in size, that's how we bring the cost of these down, that's how you can have more infrastructure or the same infrastructure serving a lot more units, and it doesn't all have to look like what Triton Square is. It can be a little bit of a lower density, but actually be a traditional neighborhood that's more in line with the densities that we saw on our walking tours through both, you know, downtown Mystic and the aquatic bridge area.
Yeah.
I think we, we had um, our friends here that were talking about, I don't want to get ahead of the uh, any changes we make to the subdivision uh, regs, but they were proposing different things, and I think a number came out, and they're like, well, we're still talking about, you know, half million dollar houses. So that to me is not any kind of missing metal business.
They're not, they're not looking to solve the missing, you know, they're not looking to fit in that missing middle, and they, I think, to their defense, to the extent that they they need it, is they, again, reiterated how there's zero energy, like it's not just housing that they're bringing, it's like that community thing that was really increasing that price as well.
Yeah, and and when we, sorry.
No, so the infrastructure and.
Yes, yeah, there's a lot of other costs that go into that, and what starts bringing down the cost of some of those units is when it's infill development, then you don't have to build a new road, you don't have to extend a sewer line, and all that other infrastructure that's there. As well as, I mean, when we talk with developers, there was one that we spoke with, I don't know, a month and a half, two months ago, and he said, oh yeah, well, you know, we build starter homes. Starter homes now are costing us four to five hundred thousand dollars to construct even something that's eighteen hundred square feet in size. If it's through the traditional lens of a subdivision on a new lot with a new road, with underground utilities, once you start taking that stuff out of there, and we look at these infill opportunities, all right, now we've just changed the game on it. So, yes, a new larger subdivision is going to be really hard to bring those price points down. Is that going to help hit, you know, not to go too far down the weeds in other areas, hit other markets, which are then going to lessen um, the pressure on some of those lower price points, certainly. And and that's why we keep talking about, it's like, we have to address all the different housing styles and price points. Right now, the things that we have in our zoning and what's dictated through the future land use map, when we talk multifamily, we're mostly talking about large building structures, and that's what the incentive is, as opposed to some of these other densities that Jeff is talking about, that Bryce was talking about, if we start allowing some of those, and then through the zoning, get prescriptive of, yeah, we want these levels of density, but in smaller house sizes and starter homes and and then enable it through the zoning changes that we do, again, addressing it in the future land use map, the description of the densities. And then the rubber's going to hit the road when we're wrapping up the missing middle project, and we have some ideas. Jeff and his team then start putting together, you know, zoning six, eight months from now to say, all right, here's what we're looking at, this is what you're looking for.
Do you mind kind of explaining a little bit how that would operationally look? Because I would want to support higher density so that we can, you know, drive down the size necessarily, or therefore the cost for folks, but like you just said, I don't want to put a high density on a piece of property and then just encourage a bunch of dorm style apartments. Uh, so what would that operationally look like in like a zoning text or or a plan like this or a future map?
So again, our P O C D, you know, when people ask, well, what are we doing? What's the purpose of this? This is an aspirational document that's setting the framework for how we want to develop over the next five, ten plus years. Just because you put it in the P O C D doesn't mean it's going to happen. So if we said we wanted, uh, I don't know what I'm always hesitant to put something out there, what what was it I was trying to use before as examples, um, this piece of property, we're going to encourage high density giraffe farms, okay? And we said that that's what's going to be there. If it's in the P O C D, and then we do nothing to change the zoning to encourage and allow high density giraffe farms, nothing changes.
Sure, I I understand that. I think my point is when we do actually hit rubber to the road and we're making zoning changes, where we say in this future concrete land use changes, we really want to do, we really want to increase density necessarily. I wouldn't vote for something unless I know how that's actually going to flow out.
Yes.
And that's, and that's the zoning part of it. So for example, if you increase the medium density from, you know, up to seven per acre to ten, right? As part of the zoning regulation change that you're going to make to address that, I would imagine we are going to have design standards, we are going to say exactly what those things, general, not exactly, generally what those things look like. Maybe they're only two stories. That's where the detail comes in, is the reg.
And and maybe just for my own clarification, because I'm seeing it two ways, when we're talking about number of units, we're talking about vertically as well, not just horizontally, so it's like that Triton Square apartment, that's three hundred units, but is it really one because it's one big block, you know?
Yeah, we're talking about each living unit, whether it's standalone or in.
So it gets down to here, we set the aspirational in what we think is a group, so this five member group says, okay, we want that zoning on the future land use map aspirationally to be ten to fifteen units nacre. But we know right now when we're saying that, we want ten to fifteen units of starter type missing middle homes. If that's what you're looking for, okay, then we can make sure that that's reflected somewhere in the text a little bit, but not getting too specific. Through the missing middle project that we're doing, we can specify that, hey, the future land use map reflects this, because that's going to be like that really detailed plan, and then in the future, when we get to the zoning, if we brought something to you that was showing seven story buildings, and that's how we're going to solve missing middle housing, then you all call foul and say, no, that's not what you said, we're going to have design standards, we're going to have buildings that are this size, compatible in the neighborhood. Start over, give us what we want, otherwise we're not approving anything.
Yeah, and and that's my fear, because when you talk about higher density, I mean, I think our first um, obligation is, you know, don't screw up neighborhoods, don't, don't make it worse for people that already live here. And if we're trying to make more housing, you said yourself that starter homes are, you know, four hundred plus thousand. And, you know, making them smaller, it's, I I don't know how you can make it guaranteed, but you would have to say that there has to be some kind of guarantee that these do fall into affordable or middle, or whatever you want to call it.
It's a different type, housing type. I thought, I think what John is referring to is a a unit on a lot. What if it's townhouses, you know, so it's more economical to build, but you can still own it. Uh, there are different housing types that can get you there.
And and you can develop design standards, and we can come up with, you know, design framework of, okay, um, you know, there's the template book that Union Studio is coming out with right now, looking at design styles of homes around Groton. Those are things, we can put those design standards into the zoning regulations to say, oh, all right, in the R seven district, you can get X zoning if you build housing typologies that look like this and are this size and this scale. So we can get that prescriptive within our zoning. And if that's what you want to do to protect the fabric of those neighborhoods, we can certainly do that. So it's not, you know, nobody wants to see a large Triton Square in a traditional neighborhood. It doesn't, it it it's not compatible, but that's where the zoning comes in. And you just have to know what it is you're looking for based out of this plan, and what we've slowly been learning through the beginnings of the missle, missing middle housing project, but that's going to be done after this. Through the beginnings of the missile, missing middle housing project, but that's going to be done after this.
As my current square, the density is that, that that's going to fall under your R M, uh, your. Uh mixed use town center, like that is not going to fall into the residential density cast we're talking about in this. Category as well. So there's going to be a natural cap there. And again. To reiterate, in terms of neutral land use map. You need to have enough of a range that, yes, it can continue to accommodate exactly what's there today. Or accommodate more at your discretion and it really is in those details of the zone that you adopt where. Where you manage a lot of things that you're you're talking about, but the future land use map gives you the flexibility to make those decisions.
What what do the current town zoning and building regulations say about modular housing or housing that's constructed off site? And brought to a brought to a site and the extent to which that can play a role in the missing middle.
Doesn't say anything.
Uh it's pretty like anything else.
Right, and there's certainly a lot more possibilities in that now.
Yeah, so the question is whether or not that could be a something in the missing middle project. Um, because there's some, as I saw yesterday, it was a article in New York Times of the op ed piece where on the housing crisis where. He talked about modular housing as a much lower cost. You know, and for example, forty percent of all the housing in Sweden is uh built off site, not built onsite.
And to some extent, yes, but this is brought in New England and the site work generally can cost an awful lot. But there are, there are subdivisions in town that are strictly modular.
That's right.
Touch that, I mean, it's a a unit is a unit is a unit.
When when you look at the, we're going down a little bit of a rabbit hole here, but when you look at the cost of development, it's like the land is. At least this used to be kind of the rule of thumb, the land was a third, um, you know, the infrastructure. And then the house construction and then, you know, over time you saw the engineering and design come up as is a whole another cost boundary. Um, in that as well, so it's. There's a lot of pieces, so if we can start bringing the land cost per unit down, the infrastructure cost per unit down. We're not going to impact construction costs and materials are what they are. It's how, if you get a smaller unit, everything. For years and years, a lot of developers have been building bigger houses because. The infrastructure, the land and the permitting process is so expensive, they want to maximize and get the biggest house. Per per square foot per lot, so that's all right, they build more, so you pay more. We're going to start going back in the other direction.
It's size and and level of conjoining.
Yeah.
That's once you butt things together and you have less outside walls and I have. The one foundation is just bigger, they can still own your piece.
Yeah, and and kind of the last piece on that is when we think about those traditional types of neighborhoods, those are the ones that most people want to live in. Because there's the ability to have, because you have so many units contributing to the infrastructure, that's where you can have more sidewalks, more walkability. And bike paths and more of a sense of a community. And others want to stay in rural areas and those will always be opportunities, you know, in town as well.
Now, because of the the big rental versus ownership, um. When we talk about all of this, is it strictly ownership or are we talking about rentals also?
Again, zoning is neutral to ownership structure. So someone can come in and propose the exact same billing for rental or ownership.
Yeah, right, it's the use, you know, it's multiple units.
Yeah. Yeah, so Bill Sweeney came in with that proposal. And here were the prices were five hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand per home. Up right next to I nine five practically off on Noank Ledge, you know, south I nine five. Big property eighty acres and stuff. I thought that was really interesting, quite honestly, um, and yet there. The design was quite good, but um. But he also had the same developer had done one over in Perkins Farm of townhouses. So I said, if possible, I'd like to, you know, I think we'd all enjoy seeing what a modern. Um, townhouse design would look like, because that would be quite intense over there and probably well.
Much rather see townhouses than.
Yeah, but I meant townhouse.
Ownership.
Yeah, the first person in.
It's something that we don't see here very much, but I know in urban areas you have hundred year leases. Renewable hundred year leases. It's as if you own it and you loan it for the rest of your life and your kid's life, but. And then you can renew it, but you never really own it. That's the difference between that and a fifty year mortgage.
Releases from the.
Yeah, we really don't, again, get into ownership versus rental zoning.
But we should. No, I agree. I agree. That's how you get people. That's how you get people to stay. That's how you have people have pride in the town. That's how you have people representing, you know, on boards and commissions. I mean, that's why I'm here. I bet you ask everybody here if they were, you know, just here for six months renting, they wouldn't be. They wouldn't care about.
We do have.
Have a large percentage of your population rents who have been here.
Yeah.
Decades. You know, very stable rental population here as well as the transient.
You think of that very dense urban areas, Brooklynites.
Rent their whole lives.
They rent their whole lives. They wouldn't know how to own because they can't own.
Yeah.
And they are completely invested in their community, so it's just what you're used to.
And it it's where people are sometimes financially in their lives. I mean, I if you think back to where were you or where are most people? In their early twenties, I mean, I think we all rented and I think we presented to you um a couple of months ago that. This past year, the average price of a first time home buyer was thirty eight. Well, that number just changed. It's now forty. Forty years old is the average age across the country of a first time home buyer. So if we don't have rentals.
We don't have thirty something.
We don't have thirty somethings and twenty somethings living in your community and some of those people want to live in single family homes. We don't, you know, the best neighborhoods are the ones that it's not all um cookie cutter style houses. It's very diverse and it's unique and you have some families, some empty nesters, some rentals, some ownership and. You know, how do we get back to, again, the traditional neighborhood?
And so I I just question why we haven't had a single condo project or townhouse, you know? I mean, nothing, because we have a lot of projects, actually. And obviously, it's there's something financial going on for the person who's building it.
But it, but again, I mean, a number of condo projects started out as rentals and they turned to condos. We have nothing to say about it.
No, I understand. I mean, I would, it'd be good if one of them started to move, but I don't even, I don't see any of that either.
Listen to. Central halls, wasn't that condos or is that just, that's condos.
Central.
That's true.
Yeah, and the standard.
Standard is condos.
No, but central halls is only a small number. There's nobody in there. Nobody's living there.
Doesn't look like it.
What are there, eight or so? Oh, okay. So again.
To show you the uh concept for the other category.
Down in the rabbit hole.
Well, these are fun discussions about housing and density. We really like this stuff.
I also know. So uh what we're recommending is um a series of mixed use, commercial, industrial categories. Uh so the current future land use map does not uh differentiate between um mixed use and commercial. And I'm seeing three basic categories, one, the downtown slash village mixed use. Uh I think this could include the M T C, the M V C, the M D D and the C N zoning districts, so more of those. Walkable mixed use um zoning districts that you've worked very hard on over the last few years. Uh another category, if we come up with a better name for this right now, I'm just calling it other mixed use, uh which would be the C R and the I M. Um because as of this year, of course, uh that residential um development is 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 allowed there. But at least for now, at least for the next ten years, this is really going to be more auto oriented mixed use. Hopefully, over time. Uh that will change, but uh early course of this plan, that's a different character than than your village centers in downtown. And then finally, uh industrial slash water front that uh include the I G and the W W zoning districts. Uh and these will really represent areas where residential development is prohibited, discouraged. And so you hope that um with, you know, those residential categories plus these categories. Um, you're going to have just a cleaner map and again, the point being to. Follow those existing zoning district boundaries to the greatest extent possible unless you see areas where. Uh you want, you expect, you expect zoning to change. Uh just to wrap things up, two other categories. Uh something firmly have uh institutional uses um and recommend continuing that, so those are the blue. On the existing uh future land use map. Um, and this would be, you know, all active schools, utility stations and other institutional uses like churches. Regardless of the underlying zoning. Uh and of course, there could be a lot of exceptions with this, a particular amount comes to uh the the schools, the decommissioned schools. There may be. Some of those schools uh. Uh Mystic Education Center and others where you want to designate them as, uh, you know, in further analysis and uh and not. Concretely keeping them in this in this category.
I think that's a good way to put it. It'd be nice to have those colors changed because when you look on here, you're seeing a lot of blue. That's probably. Not as blue as it looks.
Right, right, so keep only keep things blue that you expect to remain institutional over the next ten years, even if it's not. But without this other designation. And then, of course, finally, the green category, uh which we strongly recommend, uh you continue over from the twenty sixteen. Um, just for the forest add all conservation lands since twenty sixteen, uh so that area, uh you know, in green will expand. Um, and. Just for your discussion this evening, we did have an initial conversation with staff about whether or not to uh designate. Future um greens, green space, uh so this could be like the area in the the conservation plan. Uh that, you know, there's that listing appendix that we discussed um with. Future targeted areas, that is something that you have on your existing land use map, but uh. Town and I think the Conservation Commission as well has been um concerned about speculation, if you recall that on the map and maybe. More expensive uh to to go after, so that's that's something uh for discussion. Uh but that would be the overall framework for those uh future land use categories, so those residential categories based on density. Um, the walkable mixed use, the other mixed use, uh your um. Uh industrial, your institutional and your green. Uh so those would be the major categories. Then, um, you know, by hoping after we discuss this, I'm hoping we can discuss any of those areas where you want. Special call out for further discussion. So pause. Uh make sure we're comfortable with these general categories and then I would love to have a conversation about. Other areas where you see change needs to be analyzed.
I just, I've never seen speculation over any land in Groton, I'm sorry. I just haven't, it hasn't happened yet. Um, uh the reason being, mostly. Back when I should say a lot of the lands, of course, end up as open space or very difficult to develop, if not impossible. You know, and there isn't much left. I mean, it was hardly anything. There's a. Big enough size that somebody wants to spend the time to try to preserve it at this point, you know?
There there's a few that we'd rather not bring attention to. And those are properties that, you know, some of them were already in discussions with landowners.
I defer to your. But yes, we should have that problem that people speculation.
What do you think about in terms of labeling? You mentioned the first one was the the uh mixed use and the other mixed use and maybe. In the description, you nailed what you should be just be calling it. One is pedestrian oriented.
Sure.
The other is auto oriented. That's the only difference between those two.
I mean, it's a good idea to have pedestrian oriented.
It's drive there and you walk around or you live there and you walk around.
Yeah, that's right.
That's. Make the description the name. I don't know what you call the industrial.
Use specific questions for you, uh areas where in discussion with the town. Um, there may be some spots where you do want to make some zoning changes in the next ten years. And draw a line on the map. Uh so for example, um. Do you have any interest in expanding uh the M D D perhaps into all parts of the the R seven? Um, one of the things uh we discussed was, you know, relation to the the climate residency plan and we want to. Give space for businesses to uh go further afield uh in downtown Mystic. Uh by allowing that mixed use or pretty confident at least within the next ten years, you want to keep that where it exists today.
And this is something we, at some point, we need to have a a real discussion when we look at climate change and sea level rise. You know, we've seen that both Dev and Dave can speak to this with some of the applications that they've seen and and Bryce, you know, with folks coming in. Wanting to do redevelopment in Mystic and then realizing once they go over the fifty percent rule, the elevation. And at some point, how much of Mystic is going to be elevated and then at what point is there just going to be water going through some of the streets? So. As time goes on, is that something we want to think about now or is that the next P O C D?
I do everything about it now, but.
But is the cure to that expanding or is the cure to that saying, let's plan on lifting? Lifting Mystic.
Moving to.
Or lifting where where the pedestrians are. The cars are, and you'll park in the flood zone and everything else. Like they tried to do on the Allen Park property, put parking underneath in the flood zone and lift everything else up. It seemed like a great idea.
I think these are great questions, but I really want to study them. Because I have to look at the map, see where the flood zones are and what's available around these districts. It might make sense. But maybe for the next time we get together, could we defer till then?
Sure, but let's let's run through.
Sure, sure.
And again, some of these you may say, you know what? No, this this falls under the category of we need more analysis and so we'll we'll categorize with those.
No, I think they're all, you know, we should definitely consider each one, but I'm not going to have any answer.
In in some of these we don't expect answers on, we want to just start planting seeds now. That's why, I mean. I I say it a little sarcastically in the sense of maybe we deal with it in the next P O C D, but. At some point, we're going to have to figure out, are these mystic being elevated? Or is it slowly going up the hill? And when you're thinking about that, and this goes to all the future land use decisions. It's not necessarily what's on the market today or what's on that piece of property today. It's what could be there. Thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred years from now as well, because, you know, a hundred years ago. Groton looked a lot different. A hundred years from now, I'm sure it's going to look different than it does today.
Uh so again, whether that's something you are comfortable drawing a hard and fast line on today or if it becomes a little bubble, we show it in life. Look, you could make these considerations over the next ten years. Um, another example is the mixed use town center expansion, perhaps uh into the neighboring C N zones. Honestly, from um. A future land use map perspective, because we're proposing the mixed use town center and the C N zones to be under the same category. Uh whether you extended that or not, doesn't really need to be reflected here. It's just something that uh. Town went to bring up because it's something that you could uh project uh your intention to do over, you know, within the next ten years or sooner.
So that would be along Route one up to the Hampton Inn area.
Right.
Right, just the the frontage lots basically.
Yeah, no, I think about that, for sure.
This has come off, uh, this was, this came up ten years ago, uh the Hazen Last Year Old Hill Road area, which is all within the uh I M district. It's uh. All built out as residential, there are no industrial uses there now, um. So a question, should that remain industrial or should industrial remain an option? Uh for new developments in that neighborhood moving forward or is that uh an area where you prefer to? Um, are are those lots out and add to a a residential zone?
So just to add to that a little bit, there are two larger pieces of the the end of the cul-de-sac. Occasionally, we have people interested in nothing. Obviously, it's been developed up there. And then sewer essentially ends at P quad, so there's no sewer going up up the hill, right? Add to that, um, that road is pretty dicey for a very large truck. Given the the turns that you have to do in order to get off the hill. Um, you know, zoning it industrial implies that you think it's appropriate for industrial development. Um you know, zoning it industrial implies that you think it's appropriate for industrial development and thus. The developer shouldn't have put this that road, who already decided that's a great place for industrial, just something to think about up there.
So what would be your proposal, what parts of that to take off and just over by, right next to Hazelwood Hill?
Or, or from Pequot up, I, but yeah.
Well, uh both sides of Hazelwood, basically, and let the residential people have residential zone.
Exactly, and right now.
Happened accidentally, but it happened.
Right.
But then if doing that, leaving those vacant lots, if you think it's appropriate for the backland to stay industrial, leaving those vacant lots industrial. But again, is that what you view there for the future? You know, I think in the past, people looked at it as. This is adjacent to ninety-five, it would be great for industrial. Just because we haven't seen it, doesn't mean thirty years from now, we're not going to, but is that?
Right, sure. And, and an extend sewer, so just things to think about, you know, the exit ramp right there on ninety-five, so yeah.
And I don't, I don't think we've seen the fruition of the recent multifamily changes that we made to the IM, I imagine at some point, the, the cost incentive will. Will be there for, for someone willing to extend sewer up there to put a subdivision.
Well, I think it's already there for Norta, I know, fine, I think the problem, the whole scene property has, so of course, it's very wet. Not Hazelwood Hill, but just.
When you, um, when you advocate changes, I mean, to what?
So right now, we're talking about to the, to the land use, uh future land use map. Um so for example, if you wanted to extend the MDD, um you'd be. Changing that border between a mixed use category and a residential category, and so that might impact where that line is drawn on the future land use map. As we said, actually, with the MTC expansion, if you're just looking at expanding into the CN zone, that's going to be the same category. Really doesn't have an impact on the land use map, but it was a, a, you know, a future. Zoning change that you might want to consider in the next ten years. Hazelwood Hill Road, another one, if you uh were changing from a mixed use district to a residential district, that's going to have to be reflected. On the land use.
Yeah, but we made those changes, so residential is permitted, right?
Well, but this will be a change, this will be a house. Right?
Not individual, single family or complexes.
Right, and so it'll be just along the road.
Right, and so the big issue is, do you want to?
To multifamily.
Well, we, we are, but not, no longer.
Right, and the, the big question here is, do you want to eliminate the possibility for new industrial development in this area and just say, you know what? This is moving towards residential, let's let it be residential.
And again, a couple of things to, to think about, this is, these are changes to the future land use map. If we adopt it, if you said, no, we want this area to only be residential high density. Or mi- missing middle units and that's what we want, and that's what we want on the future land use map, that does nothing to the zoning. The zoning is still going to be industrial until you change it at some point in the future, if you ever change it. There are certain things we might advocate for, some of these.
You have to change two years, but you're.
Yeah, so you don't have to, there might be some things that we are pushing a little bit more on, this is one, we don't know. And we're asking like, what is your preference? Do you have a preference because of? There is some incompatibility there because single family. Units are allowed in that industrial zone, have been built along that road and now. It, there's, there's just, uh it, it's ripe for conflict.
Yep, right.
But, or if you want to keep it industrial for the future, you can, you can leave it as it is. And if somebody wants to do industrial, they'd probably have to buy out some of the houses to really make it reality.
But someone with an oversized lot couldn't subdivide it for another single family home. Um so we had this discussion ten years ago and the answer was, leave it alone for now.
Right.
So whatever, yeah.
Well, if we were to say take Hazelwood Hill Road, which I know very well, and on both sides of it, we make it a residential. Zone, then could somebody put some, well, they could put larger development of homes, maybe. More missing middle up closer to I ninety-five there, for example.
How you change the zone?
Yeah, but I'm saying, we could do that and then just behind them could be. That industrial, which is. Uh has no access, basically, right?
Right, something else to think about, you know, you want industrial development behind these residences, so.
Since for the beginning, since the beginning of time, there isn't any out there.
Yeah.
And maybe with the need, in fact, it's for place to put. This missing middle or some middle ground, lower rise housing, maybe that's a good place to put it.
You could put more housing back to the houses on Hazelwood, I mean, to some extent.
Maybe just that encourages that street to become mostly residential.
And then.
And it's got great access going north or south of one seventeen to get to notes.
No, I think it's, it's, it's an interesting place.
Terrible and now it doesn't seem to be a, a thing, so.
That's right.
Actually, enough above it, so, remember measure, is it noisy up there? It's above the.
Oh, you know what's interesting right there? It's got a big green space in between the north and south now.
Yeah.
That's one of the most interesting places to go in high. But anyway, but I think that's definitely, yeah, that's something to.
I think that's, that's viable.
Yeah, I think we'll think about, but then what about poor Mr. Holst?
Again, this. Right, I mean, part of this project is if you decide to put. Very large changes on this future land use map. Is to reach out to those folks who own that property, that they understand what's being recommended here.
That's always worked well.
Right.
And have lots of public hearings about that, yeah.
The discussion that Bill Sweeney had, was he talking about those two pieces?
No, he's talking about over.
Oh.
Yeah.
No, 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 not that, not the second one, the first time he came and he was talking about downstream of.
No, he was talking about this. The Downs Patty's.
Oh, from the Mar- downstream from the Marriott?
Well, upstream.
Upstream.
And again, I think, you know, to Deb's point. If there were big changes that you were proposing, that you want to do something, we're going to reach out to those property owners and let them know. And if you want changes, this is your document representing the desires and needs of the community moving forward. So this, again, aspirational. Just because it goes on the future land use map, doesn't mean it's going to happen, you know, on this future land use map. We have changes to Old Mystic for a high density mixed use zone or just a, a mixed use zone. It went fine through the P O C D when we started talking about changes when we did zoning, the neighborhood. Came out strongly against it, for those of you that were involved in the zoning, you know, back then, when Steve. And oh, no, fine, we'll take it off, we don't want that, that's okay if that's what, not what the neighbor wants.
That's how you find out.
Yeah.
I think it, it presented correctly, this could be. The lesser of evils for the residents there to say, look, at any, like, at any moment, somebody could show up with an industrial use. And we'll have trucks rolling up and down that street.
Yep, that's right.
Twenty-four seven.
Yep.
Because they'd be allowed to, we would like that to not happen instead of.
Yeah, for sure.
Manufacturing plant.
Cause you could.
Just do uh sheet metal hammering, they can have whatever they want there.
Well, what they're building, the storage facility in North Stonington. It's the same type of thing, again, we haven't received any proposals like that, but a- again, is that? How viable is something like that here? We don't know.
So something to think about.
Very good.
And Pleasant Valley School, I think that's a no brainer, that's already zoned RM, so that's going to be part of that high category. Um Navy Housing is a question for you, uh the underlying zoning is. Much less dense than what exists there today, um and we've always sort of resisted. Changing the zoning to that area, uh because the federal government isn't subject to the zoning anyway. Uh but open question remains, do you want the future land use map to um reflect? The density of the housing that's there today, we've, you know. In there, they probably push it up as the medium category.
As you said, I want to quote it, ever mattered.
But you never know.
What we would like there, they should, but they don't.
But it wasn't fifteen years ago, they were trying to close the base.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yeah, I mean, at some point, you know, things may change, but should what's there, should our future land use map reflect? What's on the ground or if we wanted to encourage more there?
That's a good question.
Yeah, if we're redeveloped, would you say, no, we want you to redevelop to the density that we allow with the underlying zoning?
Yeah.
Would you want us to be able to?
Yep.
Rebuilds there.
And just so you know, for that Navy Housing, when they tore everything down and rebuilt everything, that one, is that the way those work is by the numbers. How many housing units do we need?
Hmm.
And they are contracted to build that and, and here's how much room you have. Not, what can you get away with, how much money can you make, nothing like that, there's nothing like that, so that's why there's so much area of, of treeless lawns. Is because that's all they needed to do.
Hmm.
So I think that the zoning probably is inappropriate, it's just has, that's what they were contracted to do, the original guys, and that's what they did.
Oh yeah, yeah, there's no bearings.
No bearing on anything.
So we kind of glossed over the Pleasant Valley School one, um where else would we consider? High density areas in town, because one of my concerns is that this is the only area being pushed as high density. It's pretty dense, so where else are we considering high density in the town?
So that residential category, right now, uh the only residential uh zoning district that allows that is the RM. And the RM is pretty tightly gone around existing multifamily housing, uh it's not as though there's like. Uh vacant land zone RM, there could be redevelopment.
If we're trying to increase density everywhere, should we be looking to expand where the RM is?
And that's, that is no question as well, if there's anywhere that you think we should be expanding that district, that would be a conversation to have there.
I'm for more restrictive zoning in, in general, but.
But I mean, the place to look at is, is um Winding Hollow Road, right, there's condos up there, but there are also. Several lots that are shown on here as low density.
Yep, that's right.
Right, so there definitely are some other areas in town that, that might, you know, might be appropriate.
No, I think that's a, that's really important. That second question.
Homes on those lots, don't get me wrong, okay, but.
No, but that's a follow on question. So we're not just talking about Pleasant Valley, we should really be saying, where else can we put RM?
Have we ever been, um. Have we ever been um sued or attacked otherwise for? Changing the underlying zoning for somebody who has a house and. Higher density and it was considered a taking of value?
Uh taking a value, no, have we been sued? Yeah, we've had suits, well, we've changed zoning, but not generally when you increase the allowable density on a property, you're actually increasing the value. It's when you're down zoning that you're decreasing value. So that's historically, I don't know if in Groton, we've seen any lawsuits for down zoning.
Yeah, or not just. Changing any zoning, you know, from IM to residential or vice versa.
In the time that I've been here, I can think of at least one lawsuit for changing a zoning on a piece of property.
Which one?
Next to Triton Square.
Oh, good point, you're absolutely right.
One lot, although that was an instance where. The property owner was actually in favor of the zone change, but then as things changed and he decided he wanted to. Stay on the property, then he wasn't in favor of the zone change. It was, it was a complicated matter, happy to talk about that one offline.
Good, all right. Alright, so basically, we've gone over this, so the other category, uh there are of course things that you. Definitely want to change and the things that you would like to uh analyze over the next ten years, so just brainstorming with staff. Uh the shortlist we came up with was, of course, it's B Butler, Mystic Education Center, uh JJJ Realty Sites.
What, wherever that?
That's the one we was talking about, South of Whittles. Uh just under I ninety.
What's it called?
Shepherd of the Sea.
Shepherd of the Sea.
Right, yeah, and maybe some other closed churches as well. And, and as I'm thinking through the JJJ Realty, I'm pretty, the preliminary discussion you had, I'm pretty sure they said they were not. They were going to have the same density as what the underlying zone is, so.
Right.
Uh we'll look, that may not be necessary, but we'll.
True, yeah.
Because of course, uh. Well, yeah, Shepherd of the Sea is what the MDD.
No, no, this is on Gunji One Road, it was a chapel that was owned by the Navy, declared excess and. Now everybody wants to put multifamily on it, but it's zoned RU twenty, so there we are.
On previously filled wetlands.
Absolutely, yeah, with no sewer, yes, yeah, all that.
Although the Navy has now said they're willing to allow connect, yeah, talk about connecting to sewers.
Okay.
Yeah.
But anyway, there are a number of closed churches, institutional uses that may need further study.
Is that right?
Yeah. One right up here, same.
Let's, I thought that sold or was for sale.
Yes, it was for sale, but yeah.
Right in zoning your institutional use, sedate reuse.
Exactly.
Standards, um and so that sort of gives an exception to the future land use map. Uh it's sort of built into your zoning, um. So again, any of the sites we've already talked about might fall under this category, these are just some others that we thought. We're probably definitely not ready to uh put a flag in the ground, um. So these would be called out in some other color as areas for additional study. Uh so yeah, just wanted to see if you're, if you're supportive of that or for these properties and if there are any others that.
I think any school, I, I don't know the schools well, but um somebody was mentioning Mary Morrison. Um sorry, for the Conservation Commission, actually. Saying that would be ideal for warming because they keep the heat on all the time.
They use it, the, the, the board of ed still owns that.
Right, but they actually use it then?
They do.
No, it's not like excess.
So things go on.
Things happen there, yes.
And they want to keep it in case um the Navy picks up and.
Exactly.
Okay, good, that, that's great background.
Yeah, that has not been deemed excess at this point in time and we don't see them.
Curious.
Looking at that in the near future.
Yeah.
The community meal stuff, they use it, first full administration stuff, I know they do the preschool screenings there, they have classrooms.
Interesting, I guess, bless. Okay, great, have to drive by it. Good.
So again, something to consider, anything else you want to add to that list that we called up? And then finally, uh again, we see uh some layers, some other layers to add to the map. I think just be general guides uh for when, when you're thinking about future land use. Uh so climate vulnerability layers, specifically flood plains and sea level rise. And I think we can be very clear uh that. The reason to include those is uh, uh to just be more aware of uh, uh, the limitations. Uh of developments in those areas or, you know, to your point earlier, you can either retreat or you can harden and, and adapt. Uh but you have to something, uh so the point wouldn't be that we're expecting zoning changes in these areas necessarily. Uh but just that these are areas that we're going to have to be mindful of the impacts of, of these things. Uh also want to add roads, obviously, current, uh future. Um we have uh in the twenty sixteen, um some connections that would like to be made, I think a lot of those would carry over. Uh trails and bike ways, both current and future, uh there is of course already mapping of proposed. Networks, which we would overlay, same for greenways. Uh and then finally, uh including the sewer extension and sewer avoidance areas. Uh which really makes a nice, strong statement about uh where it shouldn't be limited and where it may be expanded in the future as. Uh sewer is extended, is extended. Uh again, that is probably beyond the ten year timeframe, uh so it's more of just a FYI.
I guess one question is, there was going to be, I think, a master plan update on the um trails, was that ever? I looked for it on the website, I couldn't find it.
Well, it, yes.
Maybe it's not done.
Streets.
Oh, it's a complete street.
Well, it, it just deals with bike lanes and trails, it's not a total, but that's.
That's okay. Okay, so that's, I, cause they could call it the master plan, I don't mean.
Is there a multi airplane for sewers or is it just, you know, the system is at capacity and there's not?
Oh, no, we have plenty of capacity, so there are certain areas in town that are, have been posed upon us by D E D that are sewer avoidance. But that still leaves some areas where sewer could be extended either by the town or.
Yeah, that JJJ Realty, the, the developer's going to pay for sewer, I think it's a four million dollars.
Be a good deal.
Yep.
Uh yeah, so the question here is, uh is there anything else you think would be valuable, so you know, we, we had a conversation around that. The, the both developments, which uh we're not going to find them out, but uh anything else that you would like to see of this? Sort of a context of him, um, that you think would be helpful.
Well, I guess these greenway lines to me are kinda, maybe this isn't the right place for it or something. But um, I don't know if they've been updated. I mean, the, the green space on this course is out of date. No, I don't know if the greenways.
Greenways probably are as well. I think there have been several ones that have been adopted and we can.
Okay, that'd be good to know, because some of these I know would be virtually impossible to bike, bike down.
Well, these are, this was meant as, it would be a great idea if one went this way somehow. Yeah.
Right, okay. And I guess that brings up the other hot topic is uh, the reservoir having a trail on a reservoir property. I didn't know if that was gonna be something that we could propose in the P O C D. Cause it's.
No dotted line.
How many decades now? The group has been trying to get that through. Um, and one of these days we'll probably get the right people at G U that will say, okay, but not yet. So it's up to the commissions if they wanna consider that. But it would, uh, that would give you quite the trail and it would help reduce cars and all that.
Yeah.
You could fly down Hazel to Hill over to there.
I don't think you'd be able to measure how many cars would stop riding on those streets with that trail, but it'd be a good idea.
Oh, we have depressing.
And we did want to expressly ask you the question, uh, since our assumption is, uh, there will be no nodes or special focus areas on this. Iteration of the future land use map, uh, but is that something you support? Are there, do you see a need for in terms of call? Out any particular nodes or um, special focus areas? I mean, again, the point of that was more of the. We want to create zoning for the town center districts, but you're done, um.
I didn't understand some of the nodes, like no winks.
Sure.
I always either, in retrospect, it's like.
Yeah, it's the nodes are two or three P O CDs ago.
Yeah.
Where.
Right.
Um, and even then, I don't think they suggested, there was a suggestion of different land uses in those areas. It was just recognition that this is a place, you know, that people recognize as a place.
Well, I never understood why they didn't follow property lines.
That would be right.
You know, either, but then that gets into difficult situations sometimes.
So you get to the one down lower here where it's a double.
It's my favorite.
Two different natures, one goes up the hill and I wouldn't mind seeing it go.
Yeah, I think, I don't know, was it commission feel, kill the nodes, forget them. They're not really adding much. Sorry, it's not adding much value at this point.
I think the concept of a node, at least as I understand it, is that it's a cohesive distinct area. Is good. I think the way that they are now doesn't really mean much. And my only pitch to save the nodes or have something similar would be, in my very strong design, it's the. More in better design standards throughout some of these corridors. I think that if we're really going to see the, the economic vibrancy that we want in downtown Groton and along the Route twelve corridor. You need stronger design standards to actually pull people out of their cars, walk around, feel like they're in a very distinct area. Want to go specifically to that distinct area. And so that's where I would focus if we're going to like call out certain areas. I look at it through the, where do we want to be very particular about how any new building or. You know, uh, reconstruction is happening and how we want it to look with that, that emphasis on having the. The sense of place that a lot of people complain we don't have in Groton.
Well, I think for a lot of these, if we're gonna, like Deb was talking about, putting some zoning categories together. We will have better design standards, I would think, or the village concept or whatever makes sense in that place. I don't think the nodes are gonna help make that happen.
I don't think we have to keep them. I don't think we have to call nodes. I'm just saying, I think it is important to call special, special. Because we have to prioritize our time, our efforts, uh, and I think that that way we could have more cohesive looks, right? It's nice. We have the Quonic Bridge Village kind of look. Uh, where else might that be appropriate? Anywhere else, right? There are some things happening on the downtown area. Do we want to extend that all the way up, uh, the commercial corridor there so that it's. A cohesive, um, like a view corridors, but I keep coming back to, but um. I wanna feel like I'm in a particular place and I think the best way to do that is to call out what we want those places to be and then.
There are design guidelines and standards for the M T C, the immediate downtown. And so if that was extended up Long Hill, so would those standards.
Yeah, but you know, and I'm still disappointed in that we relaxed that building that's being built right now, right next to Applebee's. I mean, it was a halfway decent looking building and now it's not. Remember that? I remember.
Of how we can apply and enforce to that standards.
So if it's written into the regulations, it's enforceable.
Into the zoning regulations.
Yes, if they're design guidelines, they're, this is nice to have. We don't have any kind of design review here.
This body, no offense, can be a clunky tool for design.
Yeah.
Regulation, um, unless you have design standards that are very into this effort. Now that is generally what we recommend is to go that route in zoning, um, like, uh. Is there gonna be a picture of that, this, you know, proportion? Is there going to be a fenestration that's evenly spaced? So you can, you can build in these very completes, yeah, through those standards. Um, we, we do tend to encourage, if you're gonna do something more subjective, that should remain in. Um, guidelines, uh, although of course, then you lose the enforceability, but then you're also not trying to enforce on this.
Less than historic district.
I'm certainly, all more for having a recipe.
Yeah.
And as you say, yes or no, and it's gotta be yes. And if you don't want to, then you come to us and you ask and have to have some reason for not to. And it doesn't, doesn't cover everything, but if you can make sure you do have some pitch to some roofs and. Not having glaring lights in the next door and it's in the neighborhood, by the way, we have that issue. So, yeah, we would have escaped quite a bit. Surprised we haven't done worse.
I think that.
Back to the labeling of the, the nodes, by the way. Circling them, I think, is. It serves a purpose and I think we were kind of past that purpose, but maybe it just comes down to just naming the areas because they're important. But having said that, so just, this is the place where I have the name. We're gonna talk about downtown Groton. We're saying it's downtown. This is a good place. It's called that downtown Groton. And whatever else we've got, Noink already has a name. Mystic already has a name, it's not on here. Um, so just had the, just the word without telling you where it is. It's the intersection of the roads. It's that area. How far it goes? Who knows? But as you say, it's, you want, you know where you are. You're not in central Groton. You're, you're aquatic. It's a different place.
So I live in Quonic Bridge, downtown Mystic, Noink, where I think some of those places should be those special places that uh, should be named. Center, center Groton, absolutely.
P O C D have nodes on it?
Cold Star.
No, I've seen so many signs for it in there.
Right, it's certainly.
I mean, a little subdivision up in there with a firehouse and a church.
But why? But why?
Because it was the center of Groton when Ledger belonged to Groton.
Okay, alright, same.
Oh, history.
We need a little historical sign.
So the previous to this P O C D, I think, you know, had the nodes.
Yeah.
We carried that forward in the two thousand sixteen. I don't think it's necessary. I, I agree with what, you know, what Lauren was saying, and I do think that if we wanna concentrate or have zoning. Be a certain way or perform a certain way, well, then let's just say it on the map. Because I, I think back, you know, in the two thousand five, six uh, P O C D. We were still trying to get our arms around it, so it was easier to just, all right, let's put our arms around it with the circle. You know, now we know what those boundaries are and if we want to expand them, then let's just expand them.
Yeah.
Right, and we probably shouldn't be, have anything in the city of Groton.
Correct.
Yeah.
Gray, gray that out, different font.
Can I ask a question about something that's been on, uh, I think it was on the previous P O C D, right in my neighborhood, that little hunk of road that they said? Future uh, proposed vehicular transportation connection.
Where is that?
In uh, in the wank.
Oh, it's one that goes over the.
That little curve.
Yeah. There must be a path there.
I, I think when we looked at the transportation section, some of these connections were called, they were taken off. There were only like maybe three or four. Um, that were proposed by Bowman.
Yeah.
Um, and I just, I don't remember frankly whether that one was. Um, but certainly the one that goes through the Avalonia property from Buddington Road up to Antonino, that, I know that one was taken off. Um, but there were, there were not very many.
Yeah.
Um. But to your point, Steve, Crosswood's Drive was built at a sixty foot right of way. And wide pavement with the idea that eventually it would continue through.
So what do you think?
Terrible idea, terrible idea. But I mean, for who? I mean, who's gonna come through our neighborhood to get to where?
It's an escape route.
It's on your map.
But again, you know, what's, what's the benefit of connectivity? I think we often fear, oh, we're gonna have all this highway traffic through the neighborhood. No, it's gonna be local traffic. I mean, yesterday I had one of my neighbors walk through my yard and say, hey, we're looking for so and so's friend who lives in the next neighborhood. We're just looking for yards to cut through, cause there's no clear path between one neighborhood and the next, and you can see the street. But when it was developed, there was no connection or path. So, I mean, in the long term, will that connection ever happen? Who knows? Could it be a gravel path that people walk through or hike, a hiking trail? Maybe. But again, leaving that opportunity there in case the need ever arises.
There weren't a whole lot of kids in Crosswoods historically, but they would go over the hill to get to Cutler. Because I know they would come to my house and that's how they get there. When we say, no, no, you know, it's after six o'clock, we will drive you home now. You cannot go through there. But that's, that's probably go through. So it's a viable connection somehow. Um, but back to the, the name thing, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're okay with just naming the areas just so they can be addressed.
I think we're scrapping that.
We're scrapping that? Yes, no? Cause every time we talk about, like you said, well, we're centered around, well.
If we do it misfiled here, like the city of Groton, where you just superimpose it, I don't like this.
Oh, no, no circles. Just the words.
Like a little flag like this, like this, this, yeah.
And I don't know what to call Walmart. Yeah, like, like we, that, that has no name and it's, it's a thing we talk about a lot. So.
I mean, the neighborhood up here is, is Pleasant Valley, but you're right. I don't think the one eighty four, yeah, I don't think the one eighty four area.
And that's certainly, that's a, certainly. That's, that's Route twelve, that's Route twelve.
You can just like not show the boundaries.
Exactly, just show that, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
One of the things we want to be careful of is making this particular map too busy. I feel like it's already too busy.
About ta- taking the circles out.
Oh, I think we're all in agreement.
Put the words in just instead.
Words are gonna be lesser.
I'm gonna balance here.
I'm not crazy about words, but we could see it and see.
See what you can do with the.
Because we can also just have, I think we have another map of neighborhoods. So if it's, so again.
Hmm.
Okay.
I mean, I'm even of the opinion of, as I'm looking at the current map and looking at this other overlay layers. Part of me almost feels like maybe the other overlay layers is a different map.
It could be very well, yeah.
Because that would really unclutter this map and this future land use map could just be focused on. You know, the densities and the uses, but we, there might be some that are appropriate, but again.
Vulnerability layer, you know, if these, yeah, if this is a recommendation to change zones, I think we need.
Yeah.
There that there's climate implications before we do it.
Could we gray out any areas we don't want jurisdiction for zoning?
Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
Gray out the city and.
And no, we do knowing. You are the planning commission for knowing.
Okay.
But, but Groton long point.
Yeah, we just don't see a lot from Noink, but you do have some authority there.
Could be happy.
Right, but no planning permission.
Oh, did I get, I'm reminded, yeah.
Yep.
One other idea I wanna throw out for the commissions and everybody's consideration. There's a lot of movement underfoot and it's gonna take a long time, but trying to get a railroad station in Groton, as you all know, I'm sure. And once, as you've seen at Stanford, you've got the railroad station and you've got a lot of people working there. All of a sudden you have incredible housing next to the railroad station. It's amazing.
Hmm.
And of course, we don't, well, we kinda know where the railroad station might go, I guess. But I was wondering if it's, and I'm not talking about node, but is it worthwhile starting to think about what would the zoning need to be? Uh, cause the state supposedly gonna help on if there's some big project, right?
So we have, I'm trying to think of, we've actually put, we're waiting to talk with the executive. We've been talking back and forth with the executive director of the Connecticut Redevelopment Authority. The council has authorized us looking into partnering up with that. And as part of that, they do an audit of our zoning and they are looking at, you know, TOD type oppo- opportunities there. Right now, we feel that the zoning is already, it might be a hundred percent there, it might be ninety five percent there. To allow for the densities that are needed and the walkability in the M T C district around where the station would go. I think we're pretty TOD ready.
But I think to your point, I mean, let's look at coming down the Quonic Road, right? Not, maybe not only look at going up Long Hill, but you know, down where the car wash is and.
Right, yes.
That's right.
Doncasters and all of that. And to that end, is there something further north that should, should be extended?
There's a really nice place over by West Pleasant Valley that I think would be perfect, directly next to an existing rail.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. And then the other side of the tracks, the south part, part of the tracks. I mean, that's like, that's totally ignored.
This right now is a mishmash.
The schools there, there's some.
Still some land. There's a lot of land.
A lot of it's wetland and I don't.
Well, a lot of it isn't, I know.
Yeah, oh yeah, but I, I, I'm thinking overflow parking would end up being there if it's a success, so.
Well, you have a parline corridor. You can put a lot of parking into that, I guess. A little rugged, but.
So you want us to look around where that train station, I, you know, locations would be. We could look at uh, the south side of the tracks. To see if there's some opportunities.
Because, you know, there are people meeting, you know, Rhode Island and we're meeting, everybody's invited, of course, if you're interested. But we're meeting in Westerly and trying to get this all together and the Rhode Island folks, I mean, to their credit. I think they're really driving this a lot, cause they see the benefit of extend, extending all the.
When you drill down to the details, because we have two, two tracks and, and partial third one there. And the way the platforms would work, you're gonna need to get to both sides anyway.
Hmm.
You won't have a center platform like they have in Old Sable.
Well, that's good.
It'll be on both sides, so you're gonna have to get up and over or go under, one way or the other.
Yeah.
And so therefore, you're gonna need stuff on the other side.
Yeah, good.
And, and, and those are efforts that literally take decades. They were talking about the train station at Wickford Junction in North Kingstown. I think in the eighties, it got built when I was there in the, you know, two, late two thousands. And just now was talking with the planning director there, they're finally doing, I think, you guys working on some of the zoning for that?
Yeah.
Oh, they're finally doing some TOD zoning around that. And that was something we had envisioned there. Over a decade ago, working with Horsley Whitney, doing some of the draft zoning, maybe they're just using that now finally.
Even without the train station there, I mean, it's, there's three lots that are commercial. There's one that's multifamily. There's two lots that are industrial. I mean, it's a real mishmash.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good, no, it's great. Take a look at it.
Yeah, so that's an area where you wanna see, I mean, you're already, there's, there's anything that's CN down there, RM would count in that. Um, higher density.
And we have the experts coming in. Yep.
Anything else related to this topic?
Probably, but who knows?
Yes.
So, uh, next steps, we will be back here December eighteenth. Uh, we will continue the future land use conversation. Uh, hopefully we can, you know, take your time over the next four weeks, uh, to think about. Uh, the, the specific properties that we were considering, the, the rain densities. Come, come, come with the direction, um, next month and then I also want to give you some time to discuss. I need the specific uh, public feedback you received, either in letters or by that time we'll have. Uh, a summary of what we've heard um, last week's open house. Um, the uh, online surveys are all open as of Friday afternoon. We're trying to advertise that. We'll get a press release out for that early next week. Um, so my hope is that we'll have uh, feedback. Feedback to share both in the in-person and, uh, online. Uh, versions as well as of course, the letters that have been coming in over the course of the last many months.
Hmm.
Uh, so we'll set aside the second half of meeting to, uh, discuss if there are any changes you would like to make to the drafts based on that.
Great.
So.
And where I get needed, you will, and you probably will, will come back for a final. Meeting, uh, for the implementation matrix, including, um, performance measures and that means.
So again, we're looking two more meetings to ideally wrap up a solid draft of this P O C D. So that we can then get it ready for the public hearings. Um, next meeting, really, we wanna try to. Dial in on these future land use map changes, so like really, you know, put those thinking hats on. We got, we got a month about. And any recommendations or questions, please let us know.
Okay.
At that point, we'll have a, a good idea. When the public hearing will be, you know, considering all the mandatory referrals, so, right, that figured out.
Is it possible to get an updated map? With a green space, et cetera?
Oh, oh, yeah, we can, we can put, it'll be separate, it's not gonna be on this.
No, no, just a separate.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But with these things, the zone, what are, zoning on it.
Yeah.
That gotta be very helpful.
We also get copies of just slides here because I don't think we got those.
They'll be on Greater Brody.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what we hope is by the time we get to the public hearing process, we don't have a lot of changes, because we've heard from people and that's why we're. We had the open house last week, we have the next one in January to get more feedback. We've been getting correspondence through the course of the project, which is stuff that you all have to weigh in your decision-making process of what you do, we don't wanna change.
Yep. Oh, good, yeah, you've certainly reached out.
Yeah.
Alright, okay, anything else, anybody?
Good.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, second.
Second.
Thank you, okay, wait, okay, thanks, everybody, it's all yours.
Thank you, that was, we got a lot out of you, that was two hours and fifteen minutes, appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Good, so good, think about.